Call the committee as a whole of Monday, May the 27th to order. Uh, there's an agenda in front of you. I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Counselors Randawa and Counselor Adi, any discussion additions, deletions? All in favor? Any opposed? It is carried. I'll note that we are joined this evening by video. Uh, Counselor Skelton Marvin is at a conference, as well as Directors Pucci and Dr. Bucken are at uh, doing some lobbying work for us. Uh, and uh, and I'm expecting Counselor Forrester to join us any moment now. Uh, with that, committee of the whole operates just a little bit differently from regular council meeting. It's a little bit informal. It's a chance, a little less formal, I guess. A chance to discuss topics more freely and fully, particularly from the point of view of council. However, there are still rules that apply. So if you're coming to do a presentation, we would ask that you sit down at the microphone and that you introduce yourselves, particularly for the sake of those that are listening at home. And um, keep your remarks as brief as possible. Uh, and make all of your directions to the chair. All of the conversation happens between you and me, and then I'll guide the conversation between counselors and uh, and yourselves. So with that, I am happy to invite the Kane Island Trail Enhancement Recreation Society forward. Come on up. And uh, if it's not on, you need to just turn on that microphone.
Perfect.
Yeah, yeah.
We have to do our own IT support tonight, so.
Yeah, it's part of our cost-saving initiative. You'll be doing the dishes a little later, so. How do you like our pipe?
Perfect. Um, and Rosa, feel free to just poke me when uh, Counselor Forrester joins. I'm Sean Carlson. Most of you know me. Um, one change since we were here about a year ago and presented about Kane Trails is I'm no longer on the board of the society, but I still actively volunteer. So I've essentially taken on the volunteer role with them as the trail development coordinator. It's a fancy title, but essentially I'm still doing exactly the same, except now Steve gets to wear the president hat. So. Pass it on to Steve here for an introduction.
Perfect. Thank you for having us. Steve Mylum, Kane Trails Board President.
Uh, and my name is Frances Riley and I am the Secretary of Treasury.
Excellent.
So yeah, it's been about a year since we last presented to you. So we have some exciting news to share with the, with council. Uh, so just before we begin, just want to give a land acknowledgement that we're uh, that our trail network is on the traditional and unceded territory of the Simchen Nation. No worries. We'll take a brief pause here.
You, you can continue while she does that work unless you uh.
Well, I want you to see the.
There you go. I see.
Perfect. Oh, thank you. Yeah. So last year we came here asking for your support with phase one of Claudeberry. And as you can see by the progress we made, we've done it. We said what we would do over the last year, and now we'll have a new multi-use pathway for the community to share. So we have a one kilometer long, three meter wide pathway, starting at the civic center and ending just before uh, Prince Rupert or Prince George Street, pardon me. Um, construction started around January of this year. And so over the course of the, the, the last couple of months, we've brought in close to 10 million kilograms of gravel. Uh, we've built two retaining walls that you can't see from the uh, the road, but they're there. And uh, as part of the sort of uh, final element of the project, we're going to be doing an art installation. So that will, we put out a uh, a survey probably last summer or in the fall. And um, for these uh, square metal structures similar to the terrace walls that you see on Terrace Mountain. And so we'll have three grazing deer um, positioned on the trail, giving it a destination feature to give people something, a reason to not just use it because it's already going to be an awesome pathway, but now even more so a reason to use this first phase of the, of the pathway. And um, just uh, so our contractor Axis Mountain, one day he brought his two kids out there. So we were showing how we uh, put together this retaining wall there. Frances was playing Vanuatu White with a white hard hat. Um, but one thing I wanted to highlight about this pathway was it wasn't done in isolation. So this has been a project of partnerships and one of the most important, or I don't want to say most important, but one of the big partnerships that um, kind of got us through uh, a, a hurdle early on in the phase when we were applying for the one federal grant that we're using to fund this project was getting support from another consultant, Magna Engineering Services. And you might recognize their name as the one doing the city's wastewater treatment plant. So just in sort of a work capacity, I was talking to Jennifer about the project and where we were at. And we were, we, we had just submitted a grant and we weren't successful and we were feeling a bit discouraged. And Jennifer stepped in and was like, you know what? Send me all your info. I'll do your application where you can get it into the, into the um, into the portal. So we did, I would say eighty percent of the legwork of getting the content in there, but she got us the, the, the last twenty percent. And I, I know that's a very big thing in all these projects is this, the power of partnership. So I really wanted to highlight that. And then I also wanted to thank the city and Herb for your shout out in the most recent letter address as far as property taxes. I think that was huge. Um, just again, boost everyone's spirits and highlight the importance of partnerships and collaboration in here. So thank you again for all those um, all that sort of, the ability to do that in this way. So. But where we're at now is we finished part one. You, you gave us the support. We used it and we delivered. And now we're looking for uh, support on the next phase. So over the last year, we've been working on the design and permitting for the portion of the Claudeberry Trail, which will start at Prince George Street and eventually get out to approximately the Ridley Island Road. And then beyond that, we'll just have a concept design. So we've done a variety of environmental assessments, archaeological studies and preliminary engineering and survey along that corridor. And so we're now at the stage where we need um, the city's support in order to enter into essentially land use agreements for that next phase. And so this new, new pathway, you can see sort of the, the dash section is the part that we built. The solid um, teal line is the part that we're proposing. And so it will take us to the tall trees uh, trailhead. And then eventually it'll continue to follow the highway to Oliver Lake. And then um, from about the Ridley Island Road down to Galloway Rapids, it will lead us to the finish line there. And we have two proposed alignments at the end, depending on how much money we want to spend and how visionary we want to be. Um, and then if you're really keen on the engineering drawings, this is just the cover page. And you can see how many little boxes and sheets go along with that. So it's, it's not for the uh, it's kind of like those projects. It's gonna, it's, it's a big deal. Um, so like I said, we're just looking for um, the city and city council's support to be able to work with staff, to be able to apply for these land use agreements in the city's name. The first segment is a city asset. So we as Kane Trails have built it, but it's something that the city will own and um, Kane Trails will support with the ongoing maintenance. And so we're looking for a similar partnership on this next phase to help advance the project forward. And just for some background, um, the province of B.C. through the Rural Economic Diversification and Infrastructure Program, if I've got that right, um, provided Kane Trails with a six out, $600,000 grant with no match funding to do the design and permitting fee um, phase for this next piece. So this project is fully funded. We have an end goal. We're going to end up with a shovel-ready project that we can then go and start asking for the the capital funding to move it forward. But to get there, this is where we need the city's support in order to sort of move forward with the land use agreements. So just a couple other little bits, uh, just if you're looking for other ways to stay engaged with Kane Trails, we're going to do our annual trailblazer. This is an old map. We're likely going to take advantage of our new pathway and do an out and back from Sil Cove along Rushbrook and then out to the end of uh, Claudeberry Part One. And then back uh, to Sil Cove and that will be in September. And last year, this is a path or an event that all the Rupert Runners love because it's a time they don't have to do. And just we get a, a different crowd because it's a, it's a trail race or a trail event versus your typical road race. And then the last one that I think is also really important um, to the society and to our efforts to make outdoor recreation more accessible is uh, the Kane Coastal Rider. So we have a new volunteer who's uh, spearheading this, Matt Groves. Thank you. She's a, I believe, an occupational therapist or physical therapist that works in Prince Rupert. And so she's been spearheading this and looking to get more people out on our trails in the community with this adaptive wheelchair. And so that's a, a really um, great way to get uh, yeah, get everyone out there who wants to be involved um, in outdoor recreation. And so that's, that's all we got. So thank you. Oh, and uh, soon to come, only seven years after we finished Rushbrook, is the uh, wayfinding sign that we uh, will get put up this year. So. Yeah, we'll get those put up here for the summer season, but always working hard and always trying to move forward. So.
Excellent. Counsel, questions? And can you bring up uh, the uh, off-screen or the on-screen people? Counselor Nish.
I'm just curious, is, is this trail that you've built now, um, is it, is it going to be paved?
The long-term vision is to have this paved. We're just working on the final um, bits with the contractor to see where we're landing with the budget and how everything's gone. So depending on where, where all that lands, the intent is to have it paved. It may not happen as part of this existing scope. That might be a upgrade that we do down the road.
And, and secondly, um, this next uh, section of trail, would it be done in, in phases? Or are you trying to raise enough money to do it all in one shot?
I think as inflation tells us, if we wait too long, it will double in price before we get all the money in place. So we're going to do it in phases. So we'll try and find um, sort of logical spots to, to stop depending on how much money we get and um, sort of the land use pieces. A portion of the early part would cover some of the city property that's owned. And this chair is sinking. I feel like I'm going downhill. Let's go back up. Um, but uh, yeah, so it will really depend on the logical places that we can break up that next segment where we get a decent chunk of pathway built. But then it's not just a sort of a, doesn't just end into a nothingness.
Go ahead.
Just and optimistically, if we come into with all the money, then yes, we would do it in one big chunk.
Yeah, I, I was just going to put it, point out that the chairs are on a timer. Uh, Counsel, any other questions or comments? Counselor Forrester, is that you trying? I just heard.
Yes, sorry. I'm having some audio trouble.
Yeah, okay. Um, go ahead. Yes, no? All right, we'll keep going. Counselor Cunningham.
I just want to say thank you. You know, we really appreciate everything you guys have done. It's, it's amazing. Like, you've even got me walking through them. That takes a lot. Trust me.
Yeah. Any other comments? Yeah, I, I, I just want to echo that. Like the energy that you bring and the change that you make, the trails that you've created already to date. Uh, people are proud of, they use them constantly. There, there's a real, and, and you're working on things that quite frankly, I mean, the city hasn't had the time, energy, cash to do it, right? And so um, I, I am, it's, it's funny that you uh, give me a shout out for giving you a shout out in a tax notice of all places, right? Like, you know, there it is. But, but uh, I, you know, I'm constantly telling people, listen, that's not the city. Uh, I'd love to take credit for it, but uh, because it's great work. Uh, but it's, it's volunteers that are making it happen. The other thing uh, that you're doing with Claudeberry is giving people a great illustration of why working in the ground in Prince Rupert is so much more expensive than anywhere else, right? We watched as terrorists expanded their trail. How, how far did they go? You know, kilometers. Uh, and over the course of several weeks. And they pushed dirt and then they put in wiring and then they paved it and people were walking on it. And uh, you're building retaining walls and excavating muskeg and uh, I mean, those are our building conditions as you well know. So anyway, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. And uh, I'm sure while we don't make decisions at this meeting, I'm sure you can count on council's ongoing support.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Next up, Coast Mountain College. I think you need to probably turn it on now. Just push the one button. Yep.
How about that?
Yep.
Okay. Well, thank you, uh, your worship, Mr. Mayor, Council, everyone for joining. Yeah. My name's Andy Klimak. I'm the manager of Community Inclusion for Coast Mountain College here at the Rupert Campus. I'm just going to see if this works. Oh, so who am I and what do I do? I've lived in the Northwest before. I've lived in both Kitimat and Terrace. Uh, but I do have to say Rupert is probably the best. And I can be pretty honest about that. So. I, lastly, I was living in St. Paul, Alberta, where I worked for University of Bluequills, First Nations-owned and operated post-secondary, which is a former residential school. So I was a part of the active grave search at that institution before coming here. And like I said, my official title is manager of community inclusion. What I do is I, I do basic campus management. Uh, my role also encompasses efforts at implementing policies and actions related to diversity, equity, inclusion, accessibility, and international education opportunities like study abroad, faculty mobility and things like that. So I don't really have a lot to do with program development or recruitment or those sort of things. Building student housing, things like that. What does CMTN look like in Prince Rupert? We're a small campus. We have a limited capacity. The number of students obviously varies depending on the time of year. We have a mix of domestic and international students. And we have a lot of supports in place for being a smaller campus in a smaller institution. We have First Nations access coordinators. We have learning assistants, student engagement, accessibility, and a really awesome group of instructors and faculty. People who are in town who are out doing really neat research projects, whether it's microplastics and water, or they're looking at uh, forests, archaeology, all those kinds of things. And of course, as we know, and this is echoed across Canada, student housing remains a need. What does CMTN offer in Prince Rupert? We have our, our flagship Applied Coastal Ecology Program, commonly known as ACE. That's Prince Rupert-specific. We have a business admin program. We have a practical nursing program, which is also the Prince Rupert-specific program because we all know uh, healthcare is big and front and center in the North. We have an additional healthcare assistant program. We have university credit, which allows students from nearby, our local homegrown students to take their first two years here and then transition to university for their final two years. We have student upgrading. We have early childhood education. It's mostly online. And education assistant. I put in three S's there. That wasn't intentional. Our community, CMTN is happy to contribute to the incredible cultural diversity that exists in Prince Rupert. As a side note, I have lived in a number of municipalities. And again, I think Prince Rupert takes the cake for the cultural diversity that is celebrated and influenced in this beautiful city. So I think that's worth celebrating. We're working closely with PERS, the, the cat rescue group, to address our feral cat situation. We're making big progress on that. And I wanted to highlight a couple of other things that we've done or that are happening within the building that people don't always see, that we don't always get to know about in the media. A few months ago, an instructor came to me and said, well, I want to do this, this First Nations drum drill. We're a First Nations woman. I want to have my students, who are both international and domestic, be a part of this drum drill. And I don't want it to affect the other student or I don't want to affect other classes and session. He said, just go do it. Do it. Make it happen. I support you. And so he brought in the drummer who led students from all over the world, including this beautiful city, in this drum drill. You could hear it happening throughout the campus. And the amount of cultural connection and interaction that happened to that was phenomenal. We also had a Hidaway field school recently, uh, just on the, a couple of weeks ago. I happened to be on vacation. I was coming back on the ferry at the same time the students were. And they'd been out camping and eating food and kind of cold and wet, but they had a blast. And again, these are students from all over the world, all over Canada, all over B.C., participating in this and learning. And some will probably go on and move on, but others will stay here and keep making this community something to be proud of. And yeah, as, as we know, local recruitment efforts continue. We definitely want to get more local students into our programs. So we're focusing on that. And conclusion, our BHAG, Big Hairy Odious Goal. So by 2027, we will be the college choice for experiential place-based learning. We want to get students out doing things like those field schools, going into the forest, going onto the ocean, going on our boats and doing things. Coming back and being ready to be hired and give their skills to employers. And that's about all I had. Um, thank you.
Great. Appreciate your being here. Uh, Counselor Randawa, a former board member on the Coast Mountain College.
Yeah. So thanks for your presentation. So you said like housing is a big issue for our community and the college too. So do you have any plan for housing and, and how city can fit in that plan?
Okay, that's a really good question. Thank you. Um, I'm personally not too much involved in that. That's happening quite a bit above my head. I know the college has presented that case to the province and those conversations continue. Um, I know um, there have been some other things in the work, but that's about all I can say right now. But we'd love to build something here. Absolutely.
Dr. Bucken, I know that you've been involved in some conversations. I don't know how, what the level of confidentiality is around them, but uh, have you got anything you might add?
Your worship, I will just confirm that they're having some conversations uh, recently and, and in past few years. Uh, you know, we, we stand uh, supportive of, of uh, housing initiatives by the college.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Adi.
I want to thank you for your presentation. I just want to acknowledge um, my view that the, the existence of post-secondary opportunities in a community are vital to that community's health. Um, and so I'm, I'm very appreciative of the existence of the college here and the plans they have to expand it. I know in my, my last community before I came here, I grew up just down the hill from Uvic and I know what a massive impact an educational institute can have on the surrounding community. So I, I'm, I wish you well in terms of your future expansions.
Thank you.
Counselor Cunningham.
Talking to a, you know, a cross-section of your interdisciplinary students, I know academic isn't yours, but a lot of them seem to be taking business administration. Whereas if they were focusing more on health courses with the, is there any emphasis put on courses where they can find a career immediately? Because business administration, I, I don't know. Maybe they're going back to their, their original country and that's important there, but it seems talking to them, a lot of them want to stay here. And once they take business administration, they just go out and they're part of the labor pool. Whereas if uh, they had some counseling specifically towards a healthcare assistant or things like that, with the opportunities in those fields, it might be a little more helpful for them when they're applying for their landed immigrant status or things like that. I, I, you know, maybe you can pass it on to your recruiters or counselors. I don't know, but it just seems that most of them I've talked to are taking business administration.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Cunningham.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Uh, that's, that's a really good question slash statement. And you're right, uh, the business admin program is quite large on our campus and across the college. We are looking at definitely getting more seat-specific to healthcare-related programming. And I'd say there's other, other things to consider too, like the work permits and study permits and so on. Um, but yeah, that's definitely on a radar. That's what I can say to that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Great. Uh, Counselor, oh, sorry. Counselor Forrester.
Thanks. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
I can hear all of you so much better. So I thought I would just check that. Uh, thank you so much for your presentation. My audio was glitching in and out, so I may have missed you saying this, but I noticed you had practical nursing on your slide with an asterisk. When is that program starting? Are there, is there going to be lab capability in Prince Rupert or are the students still going to have to travel to Terrace? Just a bit of information for prospective students. What's that going to translate to?
Thank you. Uh, that's a very good question. I don't have all the answers at this time because again, that's a little bit outside my, my purview. But I can definitely get that information and provide it uh, to counsel and to yourself as a follow-up.
That would be great. And uh, whether or not it's going to be in access, so carried to LPN or the full LPN program like the slide suggests. That would be very helpful for a lot of people in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you. Appreciate your coming. All right. Uh, the final delegation this evening is Prince Rupert Special Events Society. Sea Fest just around the corner. Come on up.
Uh, your worship, first off, sorry, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Uh, thank you for the invitation to speak today. Uh, my name is Cal Shelley. I'm speaking today. Uh, and my role is secretary for the Prince Rupert Special Events Society. Beside me is Joyce Sundine and Robyn Martin, and there's also two other members of the Prince Rupert Special Events Board in the audience today. Uh, to start off with, I apologize. I don't have a PowerPoint. Those were quite nice. I did wear a suit to try to make it a slightly more fast. Uh, I, I hope you've all had an opportunity to review the, the letter I submitted to the city. Uh, but we are here today for ask for the city's assistance uh, in providing our society with a safe, stable and long-term storage uh, space for the society's extensive collection of festival materials and equipment. Uh, so for approximately the last fifteen years, the uh, this equipment was housed in the basement of the Northern Savings Credit Union. Um, but we have unfortunately been notified that this space will no longer be available moving forward and that we have to find a new solution uh, to our storage needs moving forward. Uh, this puts our society in something of a dire situation. Uh, and it's for this reason that we've come uh, to speak uh, to you all today. For those of you who may not know, the Prince Rupert, Prince Rupert Special Events Society is responsible for organizing and hosting Children's Fest, Sea Fest, Canada Day, uh, and Winter Fest. These festivals will surely be familiar to you all uh, due to the important role they play each year in celebrating life in Prince Rupert and celebrating our community. On a personal note, when I was offered a job here as Crown Counsel back in 2020, I only knew two things about Prince Rupert. I knew it rained a lot and I knew that Sea Fest was supposed to be a, a very fun time. It was this first association with Sea Fest uh, that led to my involvement and later membership on the board of the Prince Rupert Special Events Society. I, I think it likely goes without saying, uh, but these festivals have an enormous positive impact on the reputation of Prince Rupert and that they provide a huge positive impact in terms of the quality of life for those living in Prince Rupert. In addition to those celebrated and heavily anticipated festivals, the Prince Rupert Special Events Society also facilitates many other uh, important community events, such as Prince Rupert's Celebration of National Indigenous Peoples' Day uh, by renting out our festival equipment at heavily discounted rates to community members that are fulfilling pro-social roles and organizing events within the community. Uh, we are, we recognize that what we are requesting uh, is not something that is easy to accommodate. But I'd like to provide a quick history of our society in order to contextualize this request. Our society was founded in 1992 when city administrators came to the conclusion that facilitating the city's major festivals was not something that could simply be done off the side of their desk. On one occasion prior to 1992, a festival coordinator had been hired by the city at a prohibitive cost and that was specifically just to organize Sea Fest. uh, and that was specifically just to organize Sea Fest. Uh, this solution was deemed to be unworkable. As a result, the Prince Rupert Special Events Society was founded to take over the planning and implementation of these festivals and to do so in a cost-effective manner. Since 1992, these four main festivals have been facilitated by our society under significant financial constraints. Despite fulfilling a vital city function, funding from the city of Prince Rupert accounts for less than one-third of our annual operating budget. The city, the society has been able to provide its enormous and outsized impact on the community through applying for provincial and federal grants, relying on the generosity of local businesses and community partners, um, and through the hard work and hundreds of volunteer hours from the community and from the members of our working board. The specifics of our request follow. Uh, we are seeking a secure, temperature-controlled space of approximately 4,000 square feet, which would be able to accommodate our extensive collection of materials and equipment. Our equipment is wide-ranging in size and requires uh, wide-access doors, ideally with some sort of vehicle access to facilitate both loading and unloading. As an example, uh, our society possesses everything from porta-potties to full-size band staging to giant mobile basketball hoops that you have surely all seen in the uh, three-on-three tournaments that take place during Sea Fest. Uh, in the response to our letter to City Hall, we were asked to provide some more details uh, about our previously filed financial statements uh, from 2022. In these statements, uh, we indicated that we have just under $65,000 in two-term deposits that we've earmarked for future storage costs. Um, while we have done our best to plan for the future, uh, those term deposits were initially intended to help us facilitate upgrades to our storage facilities uh, as well as to assist in potential renovations to make a new storage space more suitable. Um, I think the significant cost of renting extensive uh, storage space like we require will be well-known to those in this room. Uh, and although uh, we would be briefly able to use these term deposits to facilitate paying for storage space, uh, this would burn through our financial reserves and leave us right back in the same position that we're in now in a, in a very short period of time. The, the bottom line is that we need assistance. Without this equipment, we cannot continue to operate and fulfill our purpose as a society. If we are not able to find a storage space without costs attached, we cannot put on these festivals and will be forced to sell off the equipment that has been painstakingly acquired over the more than three decades of our society's existence. I joined the Board of the Society in 2022. My time here is being marked by continuing fight to ensure the capacity of our society. As I said previously, we are a working board. Every member of our board donates countless hours to organize and facilitate these festivals. Uh, this is an act and a labor of love towards our community. Most of our board work full-time and those that do not are similarly tied up in extensive volunteer and community involvement. Despite our best efforts, our capacity is diminishing. We are seeing lower volunteer numbers than before the COVID-19 pandemic and our ability to uh, fill this gap is somewhat limited. To address this, we hired a desperately needed uh, festival coordinator as a society employee in 2023. Uh, this represents a significant change from our 2022 financial budget and our financial statements as we may need to reallocate some of the funding from these term deposits to uh, uh, address uh, the deficit resulting from this payroll addition. Uh, we did raise this issue with City Council last year when we applied to have our city grant increased from 30,000 to 65,000 and for an increase in our service and kind. Uh, uh, this request was not able to be facilitated due to budgetary restraints and we remain uh, currently receiving a $30,000 grant from the city as well as $12,000 in service and kind. Uh, I bring up these issues to illustrate the adversity that our society has been facing and the tremendous efforts that our board has been making uh, to address it. We are aware that City Hall needs to be fiscally responsible and we're extensively grateful for the support that the city has provided our society in its three, uh, over three decades of existence. That being said, we're asking that this request we are making today be considered in the context of the following. The Prince Rupert Special Events Society is already a cost-saving measure for this city. We are able to do tremendous work, the benefit benefits the city on an incredibly tight budget uh, through significant community support and extensive volunteerism. Without adequate storage space, the Prince Rupert Special Events Society will no longer be able to continue in its current form. This will result in the city of Prince Rupert being in a difficult position of trying to facilitate these festivals that have become so ingrained and closely linked with the city of Prince Rupert without the cost-effective measures employed by the Prince Rupert Special Events Society. Uh, for this reason, we uh, humbly ask the city uh, to consider providing storage space to our society so that we continue to fulfill our uh, important and pro-social function. Uh, thank you for uh, giving me the opportunity to speak today and I would welcome any questions uh, that maybe have.
Excellent. Thank you. Counsel, Counselor Nish?
What is the timeline on your eviction, I guess, from the credit union?
That's a, a very good question. Uh, unfortunately, unfortunately, we do not have a, a specific uh, drop dead date, so to speak. We've been told as soon as possible and we're uh, getting uh, ushered out the door, so to speak, which is uh, difficult to address uh, with limited time and availability, especially in the uh, looming Sea Fest preparations and uh, it's essentially all hands on deck as we lead up to that.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Adi?
I would like to comment that the enjoyable side of what you do, um, the events that get put on and, and the enjoyment that hundreds and hundreds of people get from them, that's the easy part to get your head around. The hard part, of course, is the practical reality of how you solve the obvious problem. Um, so I, I'm hopeful that, that uh, one way or another heads can be put together to uh, to see if we can't move towards something that works. Um, I also want to acknowledge this moment of former students in the room and former parents of students in the room. I'm surrounded by them tonight.
Any other comments? Counselor Cunningham?
I think we're gonna have to put our collectively, collective heads together and come up with a solution because I'd hate to be the person on council that says we're canceling Sea Fest or the Kids Fest or something like that. And I don't think the mayor wants to be sitting in that seat making that announcement either, so.
What, what would I do on Saturday Day Parade Day? I'm emceeing the parade, like what would I do? Um, so listen, one, one of, and I'm saying this because I'm hoping that in, in a broader listening audience, there, there's some traction out there and that is that um, you know, ideally, if there was a business, you know, had some space and I'm sure you've thought about it in many ways, uh, that would come forward. There's an opportunity, I think, for us to create, I, I had a conversation with staff earlier today around, um, there's, there's an opportunity for the city to partner in that project and in a way that tax receipts can be provided. Uh, if, if somebody wanted to make even personal donation of, of space or, you know, there, there's, um, there, I think we can get creative on this. Um, so again, I'm, I'm probably aiming that right past you to the television world that might be listening, but if, if, uh, I think there's an opportunity for uh, either business or even individuals to step forward here and, and we can maybe make something work. But um, beyond that, I, I, and, and I'm talking past you even to the volunteers that are also in the back there. Uh, your efforts are enormous. Uh, I get to see the effort that happens on, on that Sea Fest Saturday in particular. I'm usually down here early, 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 so I get the very first shish kebabs as they come off the grill. Um, but uh, you know, when I come down, people have been busy for a long time. Putting out everything from parking barricades to, to, you know, setting up the basketball tournaments and um, uh, it is a critical part of community life, there's no question. Uh, and, and I'm speaking now about Sea Fest, but so too the, the other things that you do. And so um, on, I, you know, I can tell you on behalf of a very grateful council, uh, thank you for everything you've done up till now. We, we really appreciate what, what you've done and uh, look forward to working with you for many more years. Yeah, thank you, your worship. All right. Counsel, I don't know about you, but I found the last three presentations inspiring. Uh, but now we have to get to work. Uh, the next item up, we've got some, um, we've, we've got some policies we want to look at. And uh, just real quickly, uh, as we go through these policies, I, I, we don't want to get into wordsmithing, like if it's, you know, this word would be better than that word. Want to stay with fairly big ideas, uh, as we look at these policies. Uh, this is part of updating council's policies broadly. Uh, and so staff will be bringing out a number of them from time to time at committee of the whole and we'll, we'll go through them. Um, I do want to point out that um, in the list, policy number five is being withdrawn. It, it, uh, it's deemed to need a little bit more work before sitting in front of council, but I want to make a comment on it. Uh, and then we'll go through each of them, uh, and, and I'll entertain your comments on them. I actually question whether this should be a, number five should be a question of policy, of council, a policy of council at all. Yeah, all of you in the room, none of us will be offended. None of us will be offended if you get up and leave, all right? Thank you very much for coming. and, and, and when I say, so number five is the Employee Family Assistance Program. And I'm not suggesting for a moment that an employee family assistance program isn't important or that council shouldn't care about it. It's just my view that this is actually a, um, a policy of the organization and that council's only policy should be that we require the organ, and, and I've actually, would love us to build a list, we require the city manager to ensure there is an employee family assistance policy in place, right? That should be our policy. And then from there, the organization, and we can audit that and we can have a look at it. So that, that's, that's my view and it'll be my view on a number of these, I think, as we end up going through them, not the ones on, on here today. Uh, but uh, just what, what should be actual the council policy? Anyway, uh, that one in particular is being withdrawn. And so we will begin with uh, with uh, number one, which is the membership in organizations. It's relatively simple if you have a quick look at it. Uh, uh, and I know you've read through it, so I'm not gonna read through each piece of this, but there's the Union of B C Municipalities, the uh, North, uh, North Coast Local Government Association, Federation of Canadian Municipalities, Trans-Canada Yellowhead Highway Association. I, I, I can't remember, we have a member of council assigned to that, uh, but I don't remember who that is. Uh, but I was inquiring today just about how robust that organization is or is not. I would point out that uh, in number four, it talks about from Winnipeg to the Queen Charlotte Islands, so I would call on staff to update that. Um, yeah, yes.
Their AGM is this Friday, the 31st.
It is.
I made an inquiry from the regional district point of view because we have an appointee on it, but I haven't been able to contact him. But I don't know anyone in this room that's been assigned to that.
I thought we'd made an appointment to it, but anyway, regardless, um, it can be attended virtually as well.
Yeah, well, no one's going to this one.
I mean, it's an organization that's done some great work in the past. I just, I have had literally nothing from them in the year and a half I've been in office in terms of, of outreach or whatever, so I just don't know. Uh, West TAC, I'm not sure if our membership has lapsed in West TAC, but it, I think it's an organization we should be part of. Um, Coastal Community Network is another one which I think may have gone the way of the dodo bird. I, I, I tried to research it again. It was one I was very active in, you know, and a number of years ago, but I don't know that it's very active, but it, it can be struck from there easily. Southeast Conference and the Prince Rupert District Chamber of Commerce, as well as meetings with provincial and federal ministers. Is, uh, any comments from council on, on the, uh, on the first policy? Counselor Adi?
Just to, to follow up on your surveying of the um, level of activity or involvement with these, uh, it seems to me that there's no harm in keeping a list like this together. But I, I also think in the interest of efficiency, it might be worth having a look at whether there are any that have gone by the wayside or that we no longer feel we need to be involved with. I'm, I'm not, to be, to be honest, I'm not sure whether that work was done. Prior to this, it may well have been, have been done. And this is the list that emerged. Maybe some clarity on that would be good.
Dr. Bucket?
Thank you, your worship. That is exactly what happened. We, we did, uh, we had a, a longer list and while I can't remember the ones that have been removed, we did remove a few. Uh, we, we did try to validate that, that the ones here are still um, around. Uh, but, but they're here in case council felt that they didn't feel any need to, you know, to include them on the list any longer. I see no, no issues with keeping them on the list even if it's not active. And I, and I take note of the need to update the, the, the um, Hidhawai Islands. Uh, we'll, we'll, we will do that.
Excellent. Uh, Counselor Cunningham?
I, I think the coastal network, uh, or coastal community network has probably been superseded by the AV.
AVICC?
Yeah, cause we belong to that and that's basically the coastal communities.
It, it could be. I mean, AVICC existed while the coastal, coastal community network. I think the reality is coastal community network was largely built around the declining uh, fishing opportunity for a whole lot of heavily invested fishing communities. And um, you know, in terms of, of lobbying for government policy, lobbying for access. I think there's actually, if I recall correctly, uh, and, and the one who would best be able to advise us is in fact Des Noble. And I've reached out to Des, I just haven't heard back from him. Uh, at one point in time, they actually had some fish quota, uh, I think involved in this organization. But uh, but it was, it was first and foremost built around fish and then other, or, anyway. I, and there's no harm in leaving it and we'll find out more about it, but, but uh, the others are, are, are absolutely, I think, critical to what we're doing. Any other comments or questions from council? So that's a go for that policy. Thank you very much. I am, I, I'm gonna just have us do a motion at the end on all of them. Um, civic recognition policy, has anybody got any comments with regards to the civic recognition policy? I'm hearing, hearing none, so I'm gonna keep going. We've got um, the uh, proclamations policy, two choices, which is one delegates a little bit more uh, authority, responsibility to the mayor, uh, the mayor's office. Um, not acting completely in isolation, but there's some, there's some advantage to this in that, in that some of these things come in, especially, well, some of them come in a little bit late. I know that there's a timeline in here and it, but it's often nice to be able to just move on them. Uh, but there is a second policy, so there's option A, option B, council, I, I'm, I, I, I don't mind whichever way we go. Is there a, is there a thought one way or the other? the, the, I mean, the, the, the driving difference is that in A, it says all proclamations require the mayor or council approval. Request for proclamation shall be in writing, okay. Uh, proclamation shall form part of the consent agenda. Uh, but they may, may be happening after the mayor has already approved them when they come to the consent agenda. In the second one, all proclamations require the majority decision of council members present at a meeting. And I can tell you on a practical basis, if the proclamation in any way looked politically challenging, uh, it would be coming to council regardless. Counselor Adi?
I guess I would just say that uh, that my experience now is that the vast majority of these things um, are easy to proclaim. are easy to proclaim and support. I do think that there needs to be that, that filter for the occasional one that might require at the very least a discussion and possibly a rejection.
Yeah. Yeah. Counselor Cunningham?
I would support B for the same reasons Counselor eighty just said.
So you'd like them to all come to council and, and wait for a majority?
Yeah, cause right now they do anyway, so.
I, I'm, I'm indifferent. Does anybody feel differently? I'm hearing two for B. Yes, for B, three for B?
That's a yes, that's a yes for me as well.
Okay, all right, there you go, that's good, done. Okay, then we move on to advertising and promotions. Basically just says that council may allocate funds annually in the city financial plan for advertising promotion of general benefit to promote issues of public interest, safety messages, messages of goodwill, community interest in the economic well-being of the city. And then there's some guidelines. Yes, Counselor Cunningham, yes? Anyone else? Yes, I put this, yes, Counselor, yes, that's a yes? Okay, no objections? All right, I'll move on. Uh, we've, we've removed, um, the next one. And then we go to, um, grant transit pool and other types of passes to conferences and events for nonprofits. Any thoughts or concerns? Counselor eighty?
Uh, no, that was just a thumbs up that I'm.
Oh, thumbs up, okay. All right, anyone else? No objections? Excellent, thank you very much. And finally, the standard of conduct for council. Counselor eighty?
I, I'd just like to point out that this, this, um, refers to a, an area of some interest over the last three or four years. So I, I think in fact it's a positive thing to include. So I'm in support of it.
Excellent, thank you. Any objections, any pieces that you think need to be included that aren't, or again, big ideas not? I'm not seeing anything. All right, then, without objection, uh, I would entertain a motion that the city adopt City of Prince Rupert Corporate or Council Policies, G O B three, six, ten, uh, being ten B, fifteen, strike twenty-four, twenty-seven and twenty-nine. Could I have a motion to that effect? Counselors Randawa, Counselor eighty, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's carried. That recommendation will go to regular council meeting. Opportunity?
Your worship?
Pardon me? Oh, yes, Doctor Bucket?
If I can make a, a recommendation here, following on your comments about the Employee Family Assistance Program. I concur, uh, this really does seem to belong in the administrative uh, package of, of policies.
Yes.
Um, it, it, it might be suitable for council simply to refer this, uh, to, for, uh, inclusion in the administration policies as, and, and, and to be amended as, as required.
Can I have a motion to that effect? Counselors Cunningham and Nish, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's carried. Yeah, and then, and then as I say, I think, I think there should be a council policy that, you know, basically says the city manager shall. And we can build that list. One of them would be shall ensure that there's a policy similar to this. Anyway, all right. We will have a chance for, uh, comments, questions from council at the next, in the regular meeting, but if there's anything that anybody wanted to raise here? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn to the regular council meeting. Counselors eighty and Randawa, all in favor? Any opposed? It is carried. And with that, I will call the regular council meeting of May twenty-seventh to order. And we've got, uh, quite a full agenda. There are some late items, uh, and I will, uh, add them to the, uh, agenda as follows. There's item seven B, which is seven B four, which is a report from planning, the development activity report. Item seven B five is a report from a director of corporate legislative services with regards to canceling the June tenth meeting. There's item eight C, which is a report from the manager of communications engagement, social development with a letter of, request for a letter of support from the restrictive eligibility for counselor supports for residential school survivors. And item eight D, as in Delta, report from the city manager with regards to housing investment. And then, uh, three bylaws, item number nine H, uh, zoning amendment bylaw number three, five, three, one, which is with regards to the, uh, retail liquor sale. There's the item number nine I, which is the City of Prince Rupert zoning amendment bylaw, short-term rental, three, five, three, five. And item number nine J, City of Prince Rupert amend, amendment bylaw number three, six, three, six, which is small-scale housing. With all of those laid items, I turn to the agenda as, as with those items added and ask for a, uh, a motion to approve the agenda. Counselors eighty and Randawa, anything to add? Is that enough added? I think it's enough added. All in favor? Any opposed? It is carried. We have a presentation from Gitmak Makai Nisga Society. A man very familiar with this council chamber. Must have been tempting to go to, to your old desk.
A little all too familiar, I think. Still kind of surreal to sit on the side of the desk.
Yeah, there you go. All right. Mr. Moreau, take it away.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of council and staff. I, I did actually walk in here and it was just like muscle. I almost did a hard right pivot and walked straight to my old desk. So I'm, I'm here tonight representing, uh, my day job, Gitmak Makai Nisga Society. For those of you who don't know, it's a nonprofit society established in two thousand and two, but has existed in some form since nineteen sixty-five, um, as the Nisga Tribal Council to participate in the first modern treaty in B C, which is the Nisga Final Agreement. So we represent approximately fourteen hundred Nisga citizens in Prince Rupert and Port Edward, which is about ten percent of Prince Rupert's population. And what you can see up on your screen here, this is our five-year strategic plan. You can see clearly, we have economic development at the top and I will, I know he won't like being singled out, but Cole Moragna is our economic development officer. He's in, in the audience tonight. If you guys have eaten at Bob's on the Rocks and seen the new shade sale covering or have eaten at Yaga and Steel Cove in the new greenhouse, he is responsible for both of those things. Clearly, economic development has been a, a priority for our organization to build our financial capacity and human resource capacity. You can also see a kind of smattering of all the different types of social programs and services we've offered. But at the very bottom, you see the kind of spectrum, short-term to long-term. We did this little, you know, nice little diagram in housing, which was basically an admission in two thousand and twenty that we were not ready to step into housing as our mandate. But you fast forward to today and we think we are ready. We're an organization of about four million dollars a year, uh, between all of our locations and about sixty staff between all of our locations compared to ten years ago. We were one location and four staff. So we've grown quite a bit and we feel like we're ready. So we partnered with the city through, um, M O U in early two thousand and twenty-three, if you guys recall, on the Rapid Response Housing Initiative, which was unfortunately unsuccessful. But that didn't deter us from continuing to find, uh, projects that we wanted to try to push farther. And so we finally reached a deal to acquire property that we feel suits all of our needs. So if anyone recognizes this photo, technically called lots twenty-one to twenty-eight, Second Avenue West, but more commonly known as the former Inlander Hotel site. So we have an accepted offer to purchase, uh, this property and it's set to close next month. Basically, most people will look at this gigantic empty pit and kind of just call it an eyesore in the downtown. I see this as a prime redevelopment opportunity and so does our board of directors. Eight separate lots is a total of twenty thousand square feet. So it's of significant size to build something of a decent scale. It's right across the street. Just in the bottom left would be the Nisga Hall, which is where we're running all of our programs and services out of. There's a bus stop right out front. It's a five-minute walk to, you know, grocery store, restaurants, government services, you name it. It is within walking distance and so for an affordable housing development, we think it's perfect for folks who may not have the means to have a vehicle. Uh, also within walking distance to things like the senior center, the friendship house, daycare and any number of businesses. So after a whole bunch of different iterations and consultations, this is the proposal that we have in front of the City of Prince Rupert. Basically forty units in total, which is a mix of studios, one, two and three bedroom units. And the plan for us is to do this a hundred percent rent year to income, which essentially means you would set a threshold for the amount of money that people have to earn less than to qualify for tenancy. And then they would not be charged more than thirty percent of their rent. So extremely affordable rates anywhere from, I think, five hundred and fifty to at most a thousand dollars a month is what we're aiming at. So this is the view looking from Second Avenue towards the Highliner. Basically, the concept is to do a one-story concrete parkade underneath, uh, street level with the first level of housing being level with Second Avenue and five stories, uh, of housing in total. The design rationale is pretty simple. Gitmak Makai translates to Nisga people of the rainbow, which is a direct reference to Prince Rupert being known as the city of rainbows. So that's why you see that splash of color. Kind of design inspiration of, you can see rock, sky, clouds and obviously that, that splash of color as well. The only thing missing from this design rendering I just realized today was there is the existing bus stop right where that orange stripe is on the bottom left of the building. That's where the existing bus stop sits. This is the view looking from the Moby Dick towards the Highliner. You can see the building steps back from basically level three all the way to the top. That's essentially to respect the city's design guidelines to reduce the impact of increased height and density in the downtown core. But the stepping also allows us to have, uh, variations in floor plans on those first two levels. And most important for us, I think beyond, beyond the kind of, from a pedestrian's perspective, different types of windows and different offsets to not look like one gigantic box. Practically speaking, on the interior allows us to do slightly larger units on that first floor, which is what our intent is to have, uh, seniors or people with, um, accessibility challenges. Generally speaking, the footprint of those units needs to be ten to twelve percent larger. So it makes sense for us to step it back on those first two, uh, on those first two levels. So here's the view looking from first Ave towards town, with your back to the water, if you can imagine it that way. You can see the underground parking in the corner. The current parking requirement for development like this would be thirty-four stalls, which is essentially one unit, or sorry, once, one parking space per unit minus the half parking space per unit for dedicated seniors unit, units, and we are requesting a variance down to twenty-two stalls. And that rationale is pretty simple. We expect to have quite a few seniors. We've already kind of provisionally set aside all the one-bedroom units on the ground floor for seniors. We expect to have a lot of people on fixed income who don't have access to vehicles, who are going to want to locate here because it's so walkable and in a prime downtown location. But beyond all that too, we, if you look at any, uh, existing affordable housing complexes in Prince Rupert, whether that's Mariposa Gardens or Sunset Villa or Cootin McKay, the parking lots generally speaking are only twenty-five to fifty percent full. And that's just the nature of affordable housing. A lot of folks, you know, they're, they're struggling, that's why they need the subsidized housing. So generally speaking, a lot of them will not have vehicles or in some cases in our, in our membership base, a lot do not even have a driver's license in the first place. So that's why we feel confident that that should be enough parking for our expected tenants. This graphic just gives you a really brief, high-level understanding of how we see the distribution of units going. The yellow on the bottom is your parking. The blue is your one-bedroom. The light green is your two-bedroom and then your red are your three-bedrooms. According to Prince Rupert's, uh, Housing Needs Assessment that the city had conducted, that was one of the huge, um, needs that was identified was larger family units. And we know from our membership base that that's going to be a, a huge desire is having those two and three-bedroom units on those higher levels. I can speak from my, my own experience on council. I don't think we've ever actually had a project like this where normally this would be in somewhere like Vancouver, this would be a map of everyone who's opposed to the project. This is the exact opposite. Every yellow parcel you see here is either a letter of support or a signature on a petition to B C Housing to support this project. And the, the reasons for that type of support is ranged from anything from people just saying, we are in desperate need of housing, build anything. To people saying, yes, we need more downtown housing. To people saying, I don't care if, whatever it is, just fill in that hole so it's not an eyesore. We've had people say, yes, we need to build out Vision twenty thirty in the Midtown District. This is a good start to that. The, the reasons have been, have been all over the place, but this map demonstrates we do have a significant amount of support from our, from our neighbors. And that's not just tenants and renters, that's also local businesses and other local organizations and property owners as well. So very happy to see that. And this map is, attaches an appendix to all of our, our funding applications to show just how much support we have. So last but not least, um, why are we here? How we can make this happen? There's basically, um, three separate requests. I had mentioned the parking variance in our rationale there. You can see we will, we will require a small height variance, um, basically for that final story. If we were to build any higher, the B C Building Code would not allow it to be a wood frame, um, beyond the, the sixth story. So the, the one story of, uh, the underground, uh, concrete parkade, five stories of housing is the maximum we can go with the wood, wood frame. And so you can see we do need the height variance in order to accomplish that last story. And then as far as lot coverage and floor area ratio, I'll leave that to the experts to explain because it's beyond me. But the, the, the basic, uh, principle for us is rather than having some type of, um, amenity or setback that you might see on a level lot, if we were to do anything that was not the building, it's going to be sitting, you know, a full story below Second Avenue. So it doesn't quite make sense in our mind, which is why we're trying to build this up to the level of Eighth Street and have the primary entrance that way. So that's basically what, what our requests are to the city in a nutshell. I, I should have referenced, we do have, um, Mustafa Kelkan, our, our project consultant, as well as David Simpson, our architect on the line. If there's any technical questions that council has that, that I can't answer. And I think, but last but not least, I think, uh, the most important thing that I can draw a reference to, at least from my, my cherished time on council was this project, like I have been a part of this project from the very beginning. And I feel that it's not only consistent with the official community plan, the city's strategic plan, but it's also consistent with Vision twenty thirty and Midtown District encouraging downtown revitalization, the tax exemption bylaw, housing is accelerating, uh, Housing Accelerator Action Plan, reconciliation policy. And for you two lovely gentlemen, property maintenance bylaw, yes, we will shovel our, our sidewalks, we will pick up our garbage, we'll make sure this thing looks really good downtown. I think it's consistent with everything that the city's trying to achieve and, uh, I hope that you guys feel the same way. So with all that said, I'm open to any questions.
Excellent, thank you. Counsel, Counselor Cunningham?
I was going to say Counselor Moreau. Mr. Moreau, I, uh, see, as per usual, you've been very thorough. You've checked off all the boxes and then some. My only doubt or anything you answered earlier in a phone call was the parking, but I think you've got that well covered. And that, and, uh, we need the housing. And, uh, I think it's a great project. I think it might inspire some more building downtown. I think, uh, the only aspect of parking that might be a problem is once in a while with the Union Hall right next door. But, uh, I think that's going to be short-term for our here or our there. And that's about it. No, I support it fully. I think it's a great idea.
Counselor Randawa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thanks for your presentation. Yeah, we need housing and so a couple of questions like, one is like, uh, your timeline for this one, if everything goes fine, when we can expect starting? And second, who can rent, like only members or anybody to, like?
Mr. Moreau?
I'll take a stab at that and then maybe Mustafa can be standing by to correct me in case I'm wrong. The first and most important part for us is to get this project funded. So that, that goes without saying. So we should have that answer here, um, hopefully this summer. If that's the case, between breaking ground to occupancy is likely, uh, just over two years. Anything to add to that, Mustafa?
Um, yeah, thanks, Warren. Uh, thanks Blair. I, I echo Blair's, um, statement. So a lot of it depended on when B C Housing and if we are successful, um, we should expect to hear back in the next. Four to six weeks. And then after that, there's, uh, two milestones we have to hit within the B C housing, um, funding, um, uh, process. Um, and if everything goes well, we could hopefully expect to break ground in maybe Q two of twenty twenty five. You know, permitting and, um, all that, um, is included. So design, design, uh, sorry, costing, design, B C housing processes and legal and, um, permitting and whatnot, so.
Great. And the second question was, uh, residents, will that be open to Niska or Gitmakmakai members only or?
So we've applied to the Indigenous Housing Fund. So the obvious, the obvious priority is people who are indigenous. So in our case, we would give preference to Gitbakmakai members and then to the wider Indigenous community, uh, and then the, the community beyond that. So it's an area of focus for, for a reason. But with that said, not, not totally exclusive. Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Eady.
I would, uh, just like to note, I'm kind of excited to drive around town now. You see the sign that you got on that property, uh, the notification of the, of the project. There's actually two or three more elsewhere. So it's, it's actually getting to be kind of an exciting time. And, and I applaud your, the role that you've played in that. I'm interested in, I don't know whether I'm going to ask a question or just make a comment. The degree to which you have managed to, um. Develop support from the surrounding, uh, businesses and property owners. I, I think that my comment is, I think that's a testament partly to your style of advocacy. But probably more, um, precisely to the difference between what you do when you try to make change in the downtown area. As, as opposed to when you try to do something similar in people's residential neighborhoods. And I, 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 I hope that's a, a loud and clear message to potential developers that. Our downtown might be the best, easiest, fastest way to get to developing some properties here. I'd like that to be one of the conclusions we draw from this. So I'm, I'm very encouraged by this. Uh, I wish you well with the funding side. Uh, and I'd be delighted to see shovels in the ground at the earliest possible moment.
Counsel Nish.
Always so thorough, Mr. Moreau. I, I, I mean, it would be pretty hard to turn down a height variance when you've got a, what, what is it? Sixteen story building beside it? So, you know, I think that, uh, you know, for the amount of a half a story, it's, it's really not, uh, not, not a. Bone of contention, I wouldn't think for anyone really. And, you know, the parking, I do agree with you, a lot, a lot of, there is a lot of, you know, low income housing, there's a lot of. You know, free spaces, no, not a lot of parking side. I don't think there would be much strain on parking. So, you know, really I, I see a. A, a great opportunity to, to have a good project in downtown and, and, and I echo the same thing as Counsel Eady said with, with, uh, you know. I don't see the pushback versus if you put this in a, in a neighborhood and, and we can use the Lakewell Arms Housing Project as an example where. You know, people in the neighborhood were a lot more resistant to it. You know, and, and here you're not getting that pushback. So I think downtown is a great place and it keeps people close to downtown, uh, you know, to, to accessing stuff. So, you know, I think, I think this can work well and I, uh, wish you luck on your funding application.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments from counsel?
I, I won't say the same thing that everybody else has said, but I agree. Great presentation and, uh, I, I don't think that it's an unreasonable ask.
There you go. Mr. Moreau, final comment from you.
It's still surreal to be on the side of the table. I'm kind of at a loss for words. Thank you everyone very much for your time and, uh. I, I will sit here to the bitter end because I enjoy watching these proceedings.
Yeah, I remember somebody said, not your average twenty four year old. So.
Thirty four year old now.
I know, things have changed. All right. Thank you very much. Dr. Buckin, did you want to, do you, do you want counsel to act on those resolutions that were, uh? Taken care of at committee of the whole?
Uh, your worship, I think is appropriate for counsel to, to, um, consider them all and, and, and give us direction.
All right. So there were two, uh, recommendations that came out of, uh, committee of the whole. One was, and I'm not going to go through the details of which, uh, specific, but you know which ones we approved and which ones. And, and so I'd entertain a rec, a motion to make that recommendation to staff.
I'll, I'll move that.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, uh, Counsel, uh, Skeleton Morven, Counsel Randawa. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Uh, then the second, uh, was to, um. Recommend to staff that the, uh, uh, family is, uh, I, I, I won't get it right. Employment, family assistance, whatever it was, uh, be passed to staff to be put into the corporate side of the, um. Ledger. Thanks. Counsel Nish and Counsel Eady. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It is carried. Thank you. Public comments regarding any item on the agenda except for, uh, bylaws number, uh, nine and nine A and B. Because those were subjects of public hearing and we can't accept any other information on that. Is there? Any member of the public that would like to come forward and comment? No rush to the microphone, so I will move on. Thank you very much. Uh, the consent agenda is in front of you. Uh, there are minutes. Uh, there's a report from the fire chief. There's a report from urban planner one. There's the late items that came in. Which is a report from planning, development activity report. There's a report for, uh, with regards to canceling the June tenth meeting. There's also correspondence, request for proclamation, uh, Hope Air Day on June the seventeenth. Request for a letter of support from Salmon Enhancement Society, request for a letter of support from. Regional District of Nanaimo with regards to legislative reform of the Local Government Act. And then, uh, there were, there was the, um. Request for a, a letter of support with regards to restrictive eligibility. That's item eight C and eight D. Was a report from the city manager with regards to housing investment. Can I have a motion please to accept the consent? Yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Dr. Buckin.
Dr. Buckin.
Your worship, I, I just wanted to, uh, point out, which in the development activity report, there's a particular development that, uh, I think council and the public will be interested in. Um, and, and, and that would be, uh, a, a development permit has been issued for an A and W in town. And, and I know that this is of some interest because there were some comments made about it during our, uh, state of the city, uh, uh, meeting a few weeks back. And, and just in terms of, you know, how quickly and well staff, uh, the planning department works with developers. That development permit took nine days from, uh, being submitted with full payment to, to being approved. Which is an, an exceptional, um, service. So I, I just want to raise that, uh, you know, on, on the record, uh, with, with, uh, noting, um, this, you know, I guess a matter of public interest.
No, I appreciate that. As, actually I think there's a number of examples of that here this evening, uh, that will draw some attention to. But, uh, can I have a recommendation to accept the consent? Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Uh, items eight C and eight D are not on the consent agenda. They are separate reports.
Oh, yes. Thank you very much. Thank you. I, I get carried away. I appreciate that. Uh, so move to accept the consent agenda. I think I saw Counsel Eady and Counsel Randawa. Anything else that you want to talk about on those? Counsel Eady.
Just a, a question of curiosity that perhaps we can, uh. Pass on, uh, to the fire chief. I've been noticing for a number of months now. That the number of incidents comparatively over the year. Twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, quite often seems to be much larger than the last couple of years. So I see a trend and I guess I'm curious if we can pass on a, a question about.
Yep.
How, how they might answer why that is.
Yeah. Yeah. It, it, um. Uh, Dr. Buckin, just a, a note, I think it, it might be time to have the fire chief come and speak to a council meeting at one point in time. I see your hand is up. Are you looking to comment?
Actually, I'm just lowering that. Thank you very much. I'm not looking to comment. But, but, but we will arrange for the fire chief to come and, 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 and have a, a discussion with council at the committee of the whole.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other items you want to draw attention to? Counsel Cunningham.
In correspondence, are you lumping that in with all this?
Yep.
Okay. It's just, uh, uh, I, it's, it's not a big deal, but the Hope Air Day. That's something that, uh, the senior advocate had done in a report about transportation. Not just for seniors, but throughout the province, Hope Air and air transportation and ground transportation of rural areas. Especially with the, with the health systems going with lack of P R's and things like that. It's a very important proclamation.
I agree.
And, uh, it's, it's sort of lumped in with everything else, but it's something that, yeah, we've got to take a good look at because, uh. We're in an area where you need transportation and a lot of people don't even know about Hope Air.
Right.
And public transportation and that. So it's one of those things that I just wanted to point out that, uh. When, uh, the province hasn't done a good job of informing people of these alternate forms of getting from point A to point B.
Yep.
For medical appointments and things like that. So it, it's one of the few things that I think is quite important to note.
My, uh, it just, it just happens that my daughter, uh, who was a nursing student, I think at the time, maybe, maybe she'd already graduated. Who is now, uh, um, nurse practitioner, uh, and it happens to be her birthday. Did a bike ride from Rupert to Prince George with a couple of other nurses to specifically raise money for Hope Air. And so that's when I first became aware of it, but, uh, I agree with you. Thank you. Any other comments? Uh, Counsel Eady.
Um, my apologies. I probably should have added this to when I was, I was speaking earlier. The, um, the hatchery.
Yes.
Letter of support. I, I just want to acknowledge that. I can't remember how many years ago it was, but it was, you know, two or three years at least, uh, landslide.
Yep.
Knocked out the existing hatchery and a long-term group of volunteers that had been keeping that going. And their response to that, and I know they, they, they have quietly but diligently worked towards. Recovering that facility in some way, shape or form in this community. So I, I just want to acknowledge their efforts and their patience. And to reinforce that it's important, not just from a stewardship point of view, but also from. The point of view of the educational opportunity that that facility has provided in the past years for. Students to go and learn about the, the hatchery process. So I, I just wanted to highlight that.
I love it. Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor? Any opposed? It is carried. We move on to reports. We have a report from the Director of Corporate Legislative Services with regards to the appointment of alternate voting delegate. Recommendation is that council appoint Corinne Bombin. As an alternate, uh, voting delegate on behalf of the city of Prince Rupert for the Municipal Insurance Association of British Columbia. Can I have a motion to that effect? Counselors Nation Cunningham, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It is carried. We have a report from planning with regards to rezoning application Z D L A two four O two for lots twenty one to twenty three parcel A. Lots twenty six to twenty eight, block ten, section one, district lot one nine nine two, range five coast district plan ninety three. Recommendation is that council proceed with consideration for city of Prince Rupert zoning amendment by law number three five three eight, C one to C six. And city of Prince Rupert zoning amendment by law number three five four zero with, for parking. And that council require a section two one nine covenant to restrict the use of eight residential units to senior housing. Can I have a motion to that effect? Counselors, uh, Eady and, uh, Nish, uh, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It is carried. We have, oh, no, sorry. I almost skipped them. Uh, we have item number eight C, report from the manager of communications, engagement, social development with a request for a letter. Support, uh, restrictive eligibility for counselor, uh, supports for residential school survivors. Can I have a motion that affect Counsel Randawa, Counsel Eady? Any discussion? I, I, for, Counsel Forrest, I'm going to try to turn your way a little more often. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It is carried. We have a report from the city manager with regards to housing investment. And, uh, um, actually, Dr. Buckin, I'm going to get you to speak to this before we, uh, go to a recommendation.
Thank you, your worship. Um, the report lays out the many policy initiatives and actions that, that council at work the last few years have. Undertaken, uh, with the goal of encouraging, promoting new housing development, market and, and non-market. And, and identifies the significant number of units that will be required as industry, projected industry comes, comes on, online. And we're encouraged by, you know, certainly a number of, of initiatives in, in the, in the non-market area of housing. And notwithstanding very generous, very encouraging, uh, initiatives by council to encourage, uh, market housing. Uh, there's really only been a few, uh, from, you know, individuals that have built some houses, you know, uh, in, in the town over the last number of years. We haven't seen any large housing developments, no new subdivisions, uh, no multifamily projects. And notwithstanding all of council's best efforts and, and there's a few reasons for that. Uh, one is, is, is the lack of recent precedent for financiers to, to see that there is a housing market, notwithstanding the. You know, the, the clear demand that we've laid out. Um, it is expensive to build in, in Prince Rupert. It was one, one of council's, uh, considerations in its, uh, interim, um, housing strategy was to consider becoming involved more directly in, in housing. And, you know, given, uh, discussions over the last, you know, few months at council. Uh, staff are presenting this as, as an option for council to direct staff to become, um. It to, to invest, they gain fine options for council to, to invest more directly into market housing. Uh, market housing is, is critical to support industrial, uh, development and growth, uh, in, in the city. We haven't had the funds in, in the, in the recent past to consider such a, a move. Uh, but with the, uh, R B A, the resource, uh, benefit sharing agreement that is coming council's way, there's an opportunity to consider, consider some of those funds. Now, we, we are recommending that those funds are ultimately required for infrastructure. But, uh, investment in, in housing isn't, you know, would, would, it's not intended to be a long-term investment. It's, it's meant to be a catalyst. It's meant to facilitate some market housing that, that council becomes involved in supporting at a financial level. With the purpose of selling the, the units as soon as the market takes them up. So that the money can be repurposed for infrastructure. So basically getting two benefits out of the same pot of money. Uh, i- is the idea. So if, if council is, um. Interested in, in looking at some, uh, proposals in the future. Passing this resolution will give staff some direction to start trying to find some options for council to consider.
So the recommendation is that council directs staff to pursue potential short-term market housing investments for council's consideration. Again, this isn't approving anything except saying, we like it enough, you should go work on it. Can I have a motion?
Yes.
Counsel Nish, Counsel Cunningham.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, okay. So again.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I'm just in the middle of commuting, so I'm just trying to chime in the move. But, uh, yeah, when we have a discussion, I'll, I'll chime in.
Okay. Uh, Counsel Nish.
Yeah, I, I mean, obviously we'd love to see more housing here. Um, I feel that probably a good. Way moving forward on this, like if, if, I don't know if it's the best, uh, resort, uh, you know, use of resource to, to start actually building the houses. But I do feel that if we wanted to move towards building houses, it's taking away the unknown from, from the developers. And the unknown is my favorite topic muskeg. So if we can, um, you know, basically develop a, an, an, an area, uh, you know, contribute to the removal of muskeg. Prep the land for building, I think that would probably be a better use of our resources is for, instead of actually building a house itself. Because I, I feel that, you know, it's like the. Because I, I feel that, you know, it's like the Kevin Costner movie, you know, Field of Dreams, you build it and they will come. And I think if you build, uh, a cul-de-sac or a, or a street or anything and you get that land prepared so that, uh, you know, whether it's a developer that wants to build one house or one that wants to build 10 houses, I think if they can walk in and stare at that piece of property and say, I can start on that foundation tomorrow, there will be people lined up to build on it. And that's what we need to, I think, what we need to prioritize and not worry about the house itself. Because I think if you build the property, the, the developers will come. It's the unknown that makes it so hard for them to, to, to want to move forward and, and it just makes it easier for them to go other places. But if it's a, a piece of rock or filled with rock, they will, I'm pretty sure they will show up to build.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Cunningham? I think, nope. Okay. Uh, Counselor Skelton Morbin?
Sorry, there we go. Yeah, no, I, I think this is a fantastic idea because ultimately this is the, the last effort that we haven't executed on. I think for the work that we've done to try to attract developers as well as working with partners that are, uh, um, I think there's a, there's a, in some sections of a lot you can dig and it may be six, seven feet down and then another section it could be 50 feet down. Um, so removing that risk aspect can be risking the land, uh, for investors to build on. I think this is a good utilization of the funds. Uh, because this is a huge strategic priority for Prince Rupert. And I know that, uh, I'm preaching to the choir when I say that, uh, if we don't provide the housing for folks to come and help us with our growth and expansion, we will fail in our mission to become a world-class port city. Uh, so, yeah, I'm, I'm in support of this motion.
Thank you. Counselor Forster?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm supportive of this in principle. My, my one pause is we don't how much, we don't know how much money the RBA money is going to be. And we might, um, in some ways we might be putting the cart before the horse. Well, I agree, yes, we should be. If, if an opportunity comes up, look at it. But I don't know that I fully understand how this, this motion would pause us from doing that anyway. And I, I'm wondering if you could help me understand that a bit more.
So, uh, and Dr. Bucken, I'll let you chime in too, but the intent here is, you know, if it's a hard no from council, we don't want to see money cycled through housing, um, on its way to infrastructure. Uh, because that could be a two or three-year journey. Then staff won't invest any time or energy into it. If we're saying, hey, we're, we're certainly open to that idea, bring us some proposals, be they subdivision or other, then, then it's worth staff at least putting their time into it. Clearly, we would need to understand. Uh, but these are, I, you know, I think, I think we'll know from the province more clearly what exactly, we know the ballpark. We know the, you know, rough magnitude of, of what RBA will be, but we don't know the number. So, um, I, I'm convinced that, that before, before we say yes to any one particular project, we, we would need to, to have clarity on it. Uh, Dr. Bucken, can you fill that in anymore?
Uh, yes, your worship. I would only add that, um, i- i- if we were to find, uh, an investment, uh, housing investment, uh, possibility for council, we, when, when we go to discuss it with council, we would know how to fund it. Uh, so, so, you know, certainly RBA will, uh, the, the information on that will be available by then and, and, uh, so, I, you know, we, we will have those answers when and if we, we have a proposal to, for council's consideration.
Counselor Adie?
Uh, thank you. Every time I go and stand on a high ledge, a hundred feet off a cliff, I discover that I'm actually quite a risk averse person. Um, and so, so I, I kind of, I, I want to just examine this a little bit. Um, I, I'm not necessarily not in support of it, but, but I'm interested and be careful. Um, so I'd like to, um, I'd make a, a couple of points. One, one, one point is I'm curious about if, how you would respond if I say, as maybe somebody out there might say, if private developers won't do it, why should a public institution take that on? Because, and the reason for that is that if private developers won't do it, it's because they don't necessarily see a financial way to make it work. And so why would that be any different, uh, in our case? And so it leads me to kind of what my understanding of the worst case is. And that would be that we, um, take some money, we dive in, a, a building happens and it doesn't return the money to us. It only returns a portion of the money to us. Is, is that an accurate description of the worst case?
I, I, I think that is an accurate description of the worst case or, or that it might take longer. So, you know, Counselor Nish clearly favors, uh, you know, a, a subdivision. I'm, 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 I, I, I won't, uh, get in his way, but, but I'm, I'm open to broader options if, if I contemplate all that's available. We've had developers who, who are having a hard time just, um, you know, if, if there were, if we were prepared to do pre-sale on five units or 10 units or 12 units, whatever, I, you know, I don't know what the numbers are. And, and so then we have to turn around and put them back into the marketplace. I, I think we would want to kick the tires on that beforehand so that we believe that there's more upside than downside. Uh, and clearly that would be the opportunity for council to say, yeah, this, this one's too risky. The, the upside, the downside don't match. Yeah. So, I mean, it's impossible to imagine now what, what the range would be that staff would, would bring back. Again, Dr. Bucken, I turn to you.
Uh, your worship, yeah, we, I think that Counselor Adie's, uh, comment is, is, is correct generally. Um, you know, the, the history of real estate values is that, is that they go up. Uh, there, sometimes they, they go down for a little bit. So if, if you don't have to sell, uh, you, you generally, uh, make money. That, that's the history of, 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 um, real estate, except for towns that are, that, uh, become ghost towns and, and everything. You know, the people move away. Where we've, we, we are actually looking at the prospect of a whole lot more people coming in. And one of the reasons why we haven't, uh, you know, seen much, much in the way of, of market, private development is, well, developers, uh, down in the, in the southern part of the, of the province have been very busy. Um, we're not a known market. Uh, and, and, and it's slightly different from not being a known market. We're not a proven market. So those that, that we have spoken with have had, uh, significant challenges, convincing financial institutions that, that this is, uh, a, a market that's worth investing in. And, and also the, the improving the, the prices, but the market prices for new housing would be, I mean, there's, there's no proof of that whatsoever because there simply hasn't been any new housing, uh, uh, you know, being, uh, provided. There's certainly houses that, uh, that are, you know, uh, that have been around for quite a while that, that, that sell. But that doesn't, uh, establish the, uh, market value of, of new housing. So in a way, this is, is, would be the city stepping in to prove to the private sector what, what, what council knows is that, that, that this is a community with a very bright future. So, you know, I, I think that's, that's one of the biggest things that, that this would be doing is, is proving the market and, and, and then, you know, setting the, the conditions for developers to come up and, and then carry on without you.
Uh, Counselor Adie, continue.
I'm tempted to say I'm going to have to wear shades. The future's so bright, I have to wear shades. Pursuing the questions, um, I'm, my understanding is that if we were to direct staff in this manner, potentially down the road, a, a month or two months or three months, we may begin to see a single projects on a one, on a case-by-case basis. And I'm assuming that's the way in which we would, um, consider them on a, on a case-by-case basis as they arise. And also assuming or asking if I'm, if my assumption is faulty, that what we're looking at is any way of making it work. So maybe it means working in partnership with a private, private, um, interest. Maybe it means doing, doing something entirely ourselves or all of those, um, nuances, um, on the table when it comes to this.
Dr. Bucken?
I, I would say yes. Um, and council will scrutinize any particular proposal, uh, appropriately when we, when, when and if we are able to bring something to council, how it's funded, what the, what, you know, what the cost will be, uh, what the risks are.
Uh, just, uh, for our, uh, counselors that are online, I do see your hands. Uh, but I've got a list already, so you're added to the list. All right, Counselor Adie, was that it?
Uh, no, one more.
Yeah.
Um, uh, I, I, I want to just, uh, support, um, the concern around the RBA benefits and the amounts. It's not so much that I, I'm, I understand the money's coming. I, and I understand that we have a ballpark amount. What, what I'm concerned with is that we not, um, farm out that money in a haphazard manner and discover that once we finally know, know the amount and want to have a, a full menu discussion of all of the different ways in which we might use it, and all of the different ways in which we are bound to use it. Because I, I think it's probably more, more that than, than options. I, I would like to think that we are reserving some space for a discussion where we can publicly, um, consider a number of options, a number of different ways that we may, may decide to use it. And I, and I, I say that knowing that that process might not be a lot of fun. Um, because there's going to be some, so, some people that are very interested in whatever their,
Yep.
Their issues of concern are, and I suppose many of them may find themselves disappointed. But I do think that that's a discussion that we owe the public. Um, so I, I, I want to make sure that point is not lost in a kind of a, well, we've got this now, so we can do this.
Yep.
Move on. I, I, I think we need that moment.
No, I, I, I can't imagine that any of a proposal and, Dr. Bucken, I turn to you, but would come, there, there, to your point, you can't just pick the first thing that comes along, spend all the money and then say, jeez, I wish we'd had the conversation about where to direct that. So, so no. Uh, Dr. Bucken, any further comment?
Um, I, I, I concur, your worship, and, and, you know, the, the answer to the, the amount of the RBA, RBA and how it could be used, um, will be coming, we understand, very soon. Uh, certainly, um, you know, before any project is put in front of council for consideration.
Uh, Counselor Rondawa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, like, uh, our last council, this council, our staff work so hard to bring some more housing, like we put sale on our lots.
Yeah.
No, no tax breaks. So we done everything we could do. Our manager, he, he brought so many developers in town to show lots, but nothing happening. So I would like to see developer develop the housing, but no success so far. And new industry like to come to our town. Our new, existing industry, they like to expand, but housing is a big, big issue right now. So to resolve, like, I think this is the last resort, like, we should try. We have so few lots ready to go on Third Avenue, Second Avenue. And we should start with few units to show, okay?
Yeah.
You, you can develop here. And then I think when the other developers see that and they might start, uh, so I'm in favor of this.
I, 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 I agree with what you're saying, Counselor. I, I think it would put us in a position where we have to see what the projects are, but to actually then step forward and say to industry, look, you know, whatever we're doing, we're doing this. Join us. Uh, you know, you, you've talked about it for years, but, you know, we, we're prepared to pay, pay purchase pre, whatever it is, clear subdivision, pre-sale units, whatever. Uh, um, join us. And, and put your money where your mouth is. Uh, I'm going to my list. I've got, uh, Counselor Nish next.
Yeah, I was gonna kind of go along those same lines, but, uh, you know, the one thing that, uh, you know, in this whole process, you know, all the different housing projects, I mean, there's always so much that comes of each project. I mean, it starts from the ground and it works its way up. And, you know, and, and if we're going to dive into this, you know, we only have so much staff and we only have s- you know, so many people to dedicate to this. And, and there's the saying, you know, keep it simple, stupid. And, and I think that, you know, if we can keep it as simple as we can, and, and this goes back to, to, you know, where I was saying more about land development versus actually building something, is, is you're keeping it simple by, you know, we're, we're digging, we're getting rid of dirt, we're building a, a, a develop, or like a development ready to build on. And I think, I think that's where we can simplify as far as what we need to do as a, as a, as a council or a city to, to try and encourage building because you take out the, the unknowns. And then from that, I think if, if we can come up with a simple plan of, of clearing land or, or getting ready for development, you know, and make it a simple process to go to industry, go to the Port Authority, go to, you know, DP World, go to Trigon, go to whoever, and say, would you guys be willing to contribute to developing property and, and, and make it simple, simple as possible? We are stripping this land. We need money to do this, you know, and, and not, not trying to make it confusing and make it hard and saying, well, we'll contribute to the house or we'll contribute to the apartment building. Like you build the land and like I say, they will come. So I, I, that, that, at this point, you know, as a builder, that's my, that would be my, you know, I've been through it. I mean, you, you can see, I'm sure, uh, Mr. Moreau over there knows all about looking at a 30-foot deep hole over there and, and knowing what he's going to have to go through to build a, a six-story building out of there. So, you know, if you take away the unknown, and that's the simple part about it, is if you take away the unknown and you do one thing, not try and do everything, then I think that you will open up opportunities for a whole bunch of people to, to join in, in whatever capacity they choose to, whether they decide to buy lots off us and say, okay, we're going to build an apartment building or we're going to build townhouses or we're going to build single-family homes, duplexes, whatever. And, and stay out of that part of it because I think that's the part where the money will disappear quickly. And that's where, you know, you can use, uh, an example of Edward Avenue where a developing company comes in, you know, they're not familiar with the land. They say they're going to build 16 houses. They end up building four and they end up losing their shirt and, and, and are not successful. And that's where I, you know, if we can take away the unknown and concentrate on that, I think everyone else will come.
Counselor Cunningham?
Okay, uh, we could talk about this all night, but I think we're sort of missing the point. There's two things in this, this, uh, resolution that, that council directs staff to pursue potential short-term market housing investments for council's consideration.
Correct.
We're having a discussion as if we're going to do it. We're just, all, all staff's asking is that we direct staff to pursue this to see if we can make money or not. And I agree with Counselor Nish that, you know, let's look at it. And, you know, the, the other part is following these plans, the city has also been carrying out a number of actions targeted to improve housing supply, including the following. And there's a whole page of stuff we've tried to do.
Yeah.
That didn't work. This is just another thing we're going to try to look at. We're not doing it. We're just going to try and look at it to see, one, if it'll work, and two, if it's cost-effective. But we're, we'll have this discussion about whether we should do it or not when we get the facts in front of us. And yes, this is a good idea. No, it's not a good idea. Or maybe it's a, a risky idea, so let's not do it. But we're not passing that right now. We're just passing the fact that we're going to ask Dr. Bucken and staff to look into this and pursue it for our consideration. And here we are having a discussion of what could happen or couldn't happen before we even have the facts.
Counselor Skelton Morbin?
Uh, Counselor Cunningham brought a single tear to my eye saying all of that and saying that we, uh, that, uh, yeah, that the motion is, is different from what our discussion is. And I think for us, you know, although it's, uh, progressive for us to think many steps ahead, I think right now where we're at is just opening the door for opportunity. So I'm, uh, thankful for Counselor, uh, Counselor Cunningham's words. So I will, uh, wrap up with that. But I, and also to thank Dr. Bucken for his work on this file and, and, uh, I'm looking forward to what, what comes of it.
Counselor Forster? Counselor Forster, you're on mute if you're trying to- Counselor Forster, you're on mute if you're trying to speak.
Sorry, I, I, I. Sorry, are you there? Oh, perfect, sorry. Um, I'm in agreement. I, I think that we might be just a bit further ahead than we need to be.
Right, great. Yep, Will's, yes, Counselor.
Call the question.
All in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, Dr. Buckin. Got to get back to my place here. We move on to bylaws. I just want to make sure I don't lose, okay. We've got bylaw number nine A, City of Prince Rupert Official Community Plan Amendment. Waterfront bylaw number three five two seven with a recommendation that council give third reading. To City of Prince Rupert Official Community Plan Amendment Waterfront bylaw number three five two seven. Uh, Counselor, or Counselor, Director Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, in light of the comments made, uh, at the public hearing, I would like to amend the recommendation that council consider giving third reading. To an amended version to adjust the definition from marina to recreational vessel marina.
Correct, thank you very much. Uh, uh, so first of all. Um, can I have? I'd like to have a motion on the floor and then we'll have a motion to amend. So a motion, uh, can I have a recommendation for third reading? Yes.
Um, your, your worship, um, I believe that's in reference to bylaw zoning amendment number three five two eight.
Three five two eight?
The amendment, the, the suggested amendment.
Thank you very much. Okay, appreciate that. Keep us honest. Okay, can I have a motion? Is that a motion? Counselor Cunningham, Counselor Nish, any discussion on this bylaw? Counselor Cunningham?
Just one observation, I'd like to get a map when we get this. We've got lot coastal district and everything else, but. Don't exactly know where they are. In the future, it'd be nice to have a, a map showing this. And secondly, is this, these two water lots, are they one of this, well, you know, is this part of the marina? Together with the two water lots?
Um, Dr. Buckin, do you want me to go Director Pope?
And, and, no, that's, that's fine, your worship, I can take this. Uh, you know, I, I apologize, I believe that there was an issue with uploading the bylaws, the bylaws do have the maps attached. Um, and I, and I think that they, those were sent out, uh, sometime today, but they, uh, my, my copy of the agenda also had the maps. Uh, not included in the bylaw, but I think councils received those. Um, the, these are the two water lots that you, while you can't see any visible signs of them when you look in the water. One's directly in front of, of the, the wheelhouse property and the other is just, uh, more in front of Quinnenza. Uh, so those, that's the location of them generally.
Counselor Cunningham?
Okay, it's the, uh, permitted uses, and it has marina there. And it goes back to what type of marina, because there's, there's different types of marinas. And you can have, I, I know we say they can't have commercial, but, you know, there's, there's, you know. A normal to me marina is pleasure and small craft.
You, you, I, I think that you're speaking to the next bylaw, uh, Counselor.
Yeah, but that's why I'm wondering if what these two water lots are going to be the marina together.
Yes, but this, this is not, so let's be clear. This is, uh, amending, so it's not that we're dealing with two water lots separately. This particular, uh, bylaw reform is changing the official community plan. And then the next one is changing the zoning, and the zoning is where the marina is mentioned, so on the next bylaw. We'll deal with that. Okay, are we clear? This is amending the official community plan.
Yeah, okay.
For both lots, okay? All in favor? Any opposed? It is carried. All right, now we move on to, uh, bylaw number three five two eight, and I would entertain a motion. That, uh, council give third reading in the City of Prince Rupert Zoning Amendment Bylaw Number three five two eight, twenty twenty-three.
Your worship, I think that there's a proposed amendment from that staff identified.
I, I, I'll be, I'll be calling for amendment after, uh, after I have a motion on the floor. So Counselors Nish, Counselors Cunningham, thank you very much. Uh, somebody want to make an amendment? Counselor, just moving an amendment, just move an amendment to, to, can, can you give us the wording for the amendment? Director Pope?
Uh, yes, your worship, uh, the amendment would be to add the two words recreational vessel, uh, before marina on the list of land uses.
So the, so instead of just marina, it will say recreational vessel marina. So adding to those, those two words, can I have a motion of that effect for the amendment? Counselors Cunningham, Counselors Nish, uh, any discussion on that amendment? Then, uh, ta- uh, taking the amendment, all in favor? Any opposed? It is carried. Okay, so we now move on to the main bylaw, uh, all in, or any discussion on the main bylaw? All in favor? Any opposed? It is carried. Thank you very much. We'll then move on to item number nine C, which is the City of Prince Rupert Trade and Licensing Bylaw Number three five. Three two, the council give fourth and final reading to the City of Prince Rupert Trade and Licensing Bylaw Number three five three two. Can I have a motion of that effect? Counselors Nish, Counselors Randawa, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's carried. If, if I'm moving too fast, scream, uh, we can stop. Okay, somehow I've run out of paper before I've run out of, oh, there we go, thank you very much. Let's see, we've got item number nine D, City of Prince Rupert Addressing Bylaw Number three five two seven. Recommendation that council give fourth and final reading to the City of Prince Rupert Addressing Bylaw Number three five two seven, can I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, it's three five three seven.
Pardon me?
Three five three seven.
Uh, okay, it's happening to me again. Thank you very much. Is there really clear? Three five three seven? Uh, thank you very much, Counselor Randawa and Counselor AD, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It is carried. City of Prince Rupert amending, or zoning amendment, C one to C six, bylaw number three five three eight. Uh, with a recommendation that council give first, second, third readings to the City, uh, Prince Rupert Zoning Amendment Bylaw Number three five three eight. Recommendation, Counselors, uh, Nish and Cunningham, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It is carried. City of Prince Rupert Zoning Amendment, uh, bylaw number three five three nine, recommendation that council give fourth and final reading. To the City of Prince Rupert Zoning Amendment Bylaw Number three five three nine. Motion, Counselor Randawa, Counselor AD, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It is carried. City of Prince Rupert Zoning Amendment, uh, bylaw number three five four O. Recommendation that council give first, second, third reading to the City of Prince Rupert Zoning Amendment Bylaw Number three five four zero. Counselors Cunningham and Nish, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It is carried. Sorry, I just got to adjust here. We've got City of Prince Rupert Zoning Amendment Bylaw Number three five three one. And this is in the late items, apologies here. Three five three one. Sorry, we're going for, uh, fourth and final reading of bylaw number three five three one, which is a zoning amendment. Yeah, can I have a motion of that effect, please? Counselors AD, Counselors Randawa, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It is carried. Item number, uh, nine I is City of Prince Rupert Zoning Amendment Bylaw Number three five three five. Again, for fourth and final adoption, can I have a motion? Counselors Nish, Counselor Cunningham. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It is carried. And then we finally have, uh, City of Prince Rupert Zoning Amendment Bylaw. Number three six three six for fourth and final reading. Can I have a motion of that effect, please? Counselors AD and Randawa, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's carried. Want to pause for a second and just point out. How, how quick and responsive staff have been on all of this stuff. Uh, we dealt in a public hearing on Wednesday. On, uh, on the, uh, rezoning bylaw for the, uh, liquor store. And subsequently, not only did it go through first, second, third reading, all that. It's gone to highways, it's been approved, and been brought back as a late item for this meeting. That's less than a week. That's less than a week. And, and I could see, say the same of a number of these other items. And, and I want, I want to take just a second, you know, uh, it was mentioned earlier, but Dr. Buckin's report on housing lists a full page. Of actions that this council and previous councils have taken to eliminate barriers. For everything from development cost charges to parking and, and, you know, just bending over backwards to, to be. A, fast-moving, B, uh, free of any unnecessary red tape and staff, I, uh. I, I just want to commend all of you for the work that you've done in getting us through these things, and you continue to do, we were just. Mentioned the A and W application, how quickly it, it was turned, they're, they're just. Uh, Counselor AD earlier mentioned how, how nice it is to drive around town and see development signs on buildings, and I'm. Starting to imagine the futures, I drive past a five-story housing development across the street. There's a new liquor store over the, the, the RCMP substation is developed and, yeah, these things are just. It's starting to happen. Anyway, um, staff, I, I just really want to commend you for the work that you've done to get us to that place. And now I've got to find too many papers here tonight. I've lost my agenda.
Counselor Roundtable.
Are we at Roundtable already? Thank you very much. All right, uh. Counselor AD?
I have a, a couple of things, uh, on Saturday night, uh, the Ring System Music. Studio, uh, music school put on their, uh, Rockstar Show, which is an annual event that. Raises money for the Leicester Centre, but this year it was, I think, a little bit significant, and I do want to. Uh, admit my bias before I say this, but, uh. The architect of Ring System Music, Ian Lee, who is a, a longtime friend of mine, so I, I want to acknowledge that. He has put some fifteen or more years in, into this and has decided to step away. So this was the last one, so there was a lot of sentiment involved in it, and I want to acknowledge the extraordinary. Achievement of pulling that together and the gift that it's been to a, a huge number of kids. Um, just to illustrate, they raised five thousand dollars on Saturday night to go to the Leicester Centre, and if you extrapolate that. Back over fifteen years and the numbers are similar, that's seventy-five thousand dollars. Raised towards the, the house in which these musical events happen. And I know the Christmas shows have been for the Salvation Army, but I, I, I want to, in, in, in paying tribute to. Uh, Mr. Lee, who's, um, contribution to the community, I also want to say that the lessons that are presented for the kids. Probably is the most important element of it, that we do these things for the joy of it, and we learn the craft. But we also give something back to the community, and I think that's, that's the deepest value of all of this. So I, I want to acknowledge that. Um, I'm also going to suggest that. I can't see a future in which, uh, Mr. Lee, who doesn't remain involved in one way or another. So there's, that's one point. A second point, I, I mentioned earlier, there's a bunch of students in the room, there are fewer now. Um, but they're, they're still here, and I want to acknowledge a couple of former students. For their authorship. Aaron Williams, um, who is not here, um, has just released his second book. Um, on life in forestry and so on on the West Coast called Chasing Smoke, and in the room. Uh, in his presentation, he managed to throw in the phrase City of Rainbows. Which I think must be quite a bit on his mind these days, because that's the title of the book that he has just released. And I'm about halfway through it, and I would recommend it. It's interesting, I've learned a lot already from it. I won't mention the spelling mistake that I found. But I do recommend it as, as reading if you want to understand fr- from, from a, a twenty-first century. Inclusionary perspective, what the history of this place is, it's a really good place to start.
Wonderful. Counselor Forster?
Counselor, uh, AD said many of the things that I wanted to say. I did want to also add. My, my deep gratitude, uh, similarly to the salmon festivals that took place this weekend. I learned a lot and had a really great time learning and experiencing that with many of my neighbors and friends. And I think everybody worked incredibly hard and put on a phenomenal, um, event. Uh, as well, I also wanted to just highlight the great time that I had at the Special Events Walk this weekend. Uh, it was a great turnout from a lot of people, um, some of my council colleagues were there as well, and just. Give my appreciation for the hard work everybody does. Our community is so rich with volunteers. And people that care deeply about their roots, so that's all I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you. The Counselor Nish?
Unfortunately, second meeting in a row where it's a mention of condolences, and I just wanted to mention, you know, condolences to the. Pierce family for, for Terry Pierce, who was a longtime city employee on our airport ferry, and. Uh, when I, at my time at the airport, I, I learned, or I, I became around him all the time and, and. He became a, a really good friend and, and, uh, you know, as I moved on from the airport and, you know, started contracting. He became a really good customer of mine, and I've known him for many years, and it was a sad day to hear that he had passed, and. He did everything he could do to make sure that that airport ferry ran, uh, efficiently and saved every dollar he could when he could. And, uh, you know, he was, I don't know how long he was with the city, but I'm guessing it was probably. Well over thirty years or somewhere in that ballpark, and a sad day to see him go, and my condolences to the Pierce family.
Well said, thank you. Uh, Counselor Cunningham?
On, on note of what Counselor AD said about the concert on Saturday night, one, uh, side note of that is. The pride I've heard in people's voices, did you see so-and-so, did you see so-and-so, like, you know, whether it was my granddaughter, Georgia Boot, or. Director Bombin's son Plague and all the other parents around town today that were talking about their kids. And you know how, you know, how their lives have changed by Ian's mentoring and that and giving him self-confidence and everything. It's, uh, you know, not only did it raise a lot of money, but it, it brought a lot out in a lot of young kids. And gave a lot of self-confidence in that, and I think the town owes Ian a lot just for that aspect alone, too.
Excellent, thank you. Any other comments? Uh, I'll just mention that, uh, earlier this evening in closed council meeting, council made two appointments. Uh, at the request of the Indigenous Relations Committee, uh, they asked that we appoint. Uh, Clarence Nelson Senior and Murray Smith to, to that committee, and council took that action. And then I just want to acknowledge, uh, and, and congratulate the port on one more step towards the completion of their export logistics park. With the announcement this week of a hundred and fifty million dollar, uh, advancement from the, um. Canada Infrastructure Bank, so huge, huge step forward on a, for another project that, that will just be taken Prince Rupert. Into the future. With that, if there's nothing else, council, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Counselors Cunningham and Nish? All in favor? Any opposed? It is carried.